MSBA addendum. Superintendent?
Yes, so the last time we were here, we were preparing for, or we had the walkthrough. The last time we were here, we had the walkthrough. It was that evening, that night. And as you all are aware, they had asked us to put together an addendum. I have put together the addendum. We submitted that addendum the following Monday. They did inform us that they received the information. They thanked us for the information and they will, you know, review it. So, once again, that was submitted. We talked about enrollment. We talked about safety, security, special education, preschool. Stem again on that, as well as arts and humanities and basically what it was that we were looking for and how strong of a community we are that if you give us this opportunity, we will work together to help. So, we're very hopeful. I'm not going to go into a lot of this because I can go into it in the next thing with this slide presentation, because I'd like to talk about the feasibility study. But that's, that is, oh, here it is, the other stuff, yeah. So, I have that. So, in the high school feasibility study, I am going to, on Monday night, I will be presenting a town meeting. I'll be giving an update. And this is the letter that you see that is in the school, it's in the town meeting packet. For those who aren't aware, there's open town meeting on Monday. It starts at seven o'clock, so, so please attend if you can. And then, the, one of the things that we met with the school committee and other members of the administration team in regards to what the feasibility came out to look like that we see through HMFH. Just to let you know, Tina Stanislawski and myself did a show last week called Chalk Talk. And it was our first show, but it was, I mean, it was my first show as the superintendent in Stonem. And I enjoy that stuff, so we'll do a lot more of those things. But, in any event, we talked a lot about what you see here today that I'm going to come up, I'm going to go over there and, and press the buttons and talk to you about that, if that's alright, and go through some of these slides.
So, the chalk talk was the same, is the same presentation?
Pretty much, pretty much.
It's on Stonem TV?
It's on Stonem TV. And we shortened it, we abridged it a little because we only had 28 minutes, but I won't take 28 minutes.
Okay.
So, I'll move it quick. But, the, I think what's important is for people to understand that we had a committee that was put together, the design committee, a former superintendent put that together. Town meeting, as you know, put together and authorized us $125,000 to create a feasibility study, which we did. We hired an architect. The architect was HMFH. And you met Tina, you guys all have an opportunity to talk about it. So, in the key spaces that support the educational plan, we had cutting-edge Makerspace Fabrication Lab that we want to look at, performing arts spaces, art studios located in a steam zone that they talked about, state-of-the-art science labs that allow safe 21st century, hands-on learning experience, flexible project areas, project areas for student work and achievement, light skills, 1822, and other special education classrooms integrated within classroom wings, collaborative and meeting space for educators within classroom wings. And what we're talking about by that is having, teachers don't own their own classroom spaces you move forward. They have spaces where they go in to work. They have their own rooms with other teachers, so they can collaborate in those areas. Physical education facilities that support health and wellness and prepaid programs.
John, excuse me, before you start?
Yes.
I don't know if this is going to come out because you're not talking into a mic.
Oh.
Can you take this mic and sort of?
Sure.
Bring it toward you.
Sure.
Also, I'm just going to give my back a break. That's, that's, there's no other.
I'll flick the slide and then I think you'll be able to hear it all.
Trying to flee.
So, when they talk about project areas, they're looking at, these are types of project areas that they're talking about opening up your school and having areas. These are just visions of other schools that, when, when, when you'll hear us later, talk about what those things may look like. And, and like, here's an example of a Makerspace Fabrication Lab that you can have in your schools that people work and good works based on those. So, currently, what you see here is the existing high school. This is how the existing layout is. You'll see that the gym is over here to the left, the auditorium to the right, classrooms. It's color-coded, the green colors are the administrative wings at the high school right now, because we're all mixed around, and then you'll have different types of colors, like the orange is the science and the blues. The blues are the physical education, the locker rooms areas and all of those area. And then, you'll notice that our building, of course, is two floors. Upstairs, you have, it's mostly classroom wings, and then, whoops, and then downstairs is the area where they used to have lots of shops and stuff. It's now been taken over mostly by the athletics are using it. I am happy to say that the drama has a room down there now, too. They're building sex down there. So, there's lots of stuff happening. So, we looked at three options, folks. So, three options are what the feasibility is going to come back with. One is a complete renovation package that would take this building, and currently you see it here, and it would renovate everything that's within that building again. All the classrooms, the science wings, the gymnasium, the auditorium. And what would happen there is, right here, you would see, that would knock out the administration of the central administration staff, because they don't, they would not have the room for us in the renovation to stay there. High school, most, most of the stuff stays exactly the way it is, but if you'll notice the orange there in the middle, they would put the science classrooms, they would move those into the middle. The outer edge, where currently those science classrooms are now, the new section that they call way over in that area, that's where they would say, well, they would put the preschool. And then, the auditorium, they would renovate, and most, most of the stuff that you see there would be a complete renovation. Same thing on the second floor. The classrooms would, would be a little below MSBA measure, because they'd be about 800 feet, 800 square footers as opposed to 900. And the science labs that, if you build new, are 1,445 square feet, they would be about 1,200 square feet.
Where was the preschool? It was?
On this renovation.
It got shut out on the bottom.
Right here.
Down there?
That way, they could have, the driveway could come in.
Oh, right, the driveway goes up there?
Right. And then, your third, second floor, and then down here, that would be all locker room space and more athletics, and they would, they would, instead of having, where the athletics are right now, the locker rooms, they would turn all those into the science labs, that space there by the gym. But then downstairs, they would renovate that whole area.
So, the science labs wouldn't be in the lower level?
They would be, they would be up on that, so they would be over here. Currently, right now, the science labs would be over here, and then these areas would be, like, art classrooms and designer and, and Makerspace and that whole area there, if you renovated it in that section.
But, the gymnasium still have lockers?
Gymnasium would still have lockers. The lockers would be downstairs.
Okay.
That's this part here. That would be the whole locker room space on that. That's if you renovate. Now, if you go to renovate the building, the difference there is that, in order to construct this, as you would see, this is what the building would look like at the end, very similar to the current building, which you have on the renovation. How you would do that, though, is you would have to cut out, you'd have to renovate this whole area, which would take about 18 months. So, what does that mean? That means you've got to put all modular classrooms outside that connect to the school. You would use the cafeteria currently, the way it was, and you would connect over to here to use, that these science rooms would stay there for now, while they were renovating this whole section, and you would connect, probably have to go outside and come in to use the gymnasium, to go into the gym during that renovation period. A complete renovation would go on, because then, once that would be completed, then you would have to renovate the auditorium and the administration, and then also the gymnasium would get renovated. So, that, that complete package, if you were to go to renovate, the timeframe on that is probably about four years of just renovating on how it would be as an option, because you're still going to school in there and you, and the expense that you have there with the modular classrooms and all of that, you would put them in there, but you don't get any reimbursement for any of that, because that's your own expense.
Did you have, did you modulars? No, you didn't, not.
Did not.
Because it's a different site, right?
Right. No, they tore the building down when I was at it. I had to move everybody, squeeze them into other buildings.
Other school department buildings?
Yeah. Yeah, it was not a fun experience, but we did it, because we saved a lot of money that we wouldn't have had to, we would have had to spend on that. So, now, let's take a look at option two. It's, option two is a renovation with the gymnasium, renovation of the gym only with an addition. And as you'll see here, if you look at this picture here, here's the current high school. Then, here is the, is what they're looking to want to do, build in front of the current high school, and then connect to the gymnasium. So, by building in front, they would have three floors of academics. The auditorium would no longer be back here. The auditorium would be brand-new and be out front. And then, the gymnasium would be connected to the gym. What that does for you is that allows you to have a security, so this, this is what the building would look like when you take the other building down. And you see all the grass that you, we kind of moved the softball field over here, because we wanted to make sure the parking lot, you know, in this, in this design is a parking lot, and when this, the gym stays exactly the gym as it is. And part of the reasoning of looking at that is because right now, the gym is located in the best place out of the whole building, because if you walk outside that gym, you walk right into the fields, and you're right there. This building here, when you have an auditorium in the gym, they're the most utilized off school hours. So, for safety reasons, you want to be able to have people go into an auditorium or go into the gymnasium without having to enter the other parts of the building. Currently, right now, to go to the auditorium, you have to go through the high school to get to the auditorium. And so, those are, those are parts. In this area, you would have two administrative wings here. You've got, the high school would stay exactly where it is. The superintendent's office and the business and all that would be over here, right up in the front. So, you'd have an actual entrance to come into the superintendent's space, as opposed to where it is now, you have to go all the way around to the back. You notice the gym stays where it is, and the preschool is actually built into here on the other end, because there's no, so cars can come around and drop off right here, because this is all open space. And you can build an actual playground, you can build lots of stuff there for just the preschool to have. I'm moving a little fast, but you can, you'll, if you get a chance to watch the show, you'll be able to see all the stuff that's going on. The upstairs is more of more academic classrooms, because that goes to second and third. There's the third floor, so you've got multiple space there, and then you have your gym. And so, there's your, your gymnasium and how everything works. So, basically, with this renovation is you're renovating the gym, so you would build, what you would do is you would build the whole front of the building. The only issue would be you'd still be going to school, and imagine them building in front of you. No matter what you do, if you renovate, it's, it doesn't matter, if you want to stay in that same area. The beauty of Stonem is when you come down that campus, you see that building, and you see that campus, it's beautiful. And you kind of want to keep that. I mean, I think, I think you kind of want to really look at keeping that, as opposed to just, you know, changing that around, because it adds something. Now, when you take a look at the third option, the third option would be we just completely build brand-new. So, and, and I've done that option, I've built brand-new. So, on here, though, if you look at this, here's the school itself, the current school. And so, the only area that they looked at right now that said, where could they build brand-new, would be over by where the tennis courts are, that parking lot over in that area. And if they built there, they'd have to put the school there, and you'd say, well, why can't they build a new school here? Well, they can't build it while that people are in there. So, when you take this picture here, this slide, you see, okay, now that school's gone, here's the parking lot. You are coming in, but you're actually going in at a different angle, because there's your gym is more to the back, so kids would come out of the gym this way, and they're on the fields. But, my only issue, and a personal issue, is that you're way over here now, as opposed to where you were. I mean, I think that there was a reason why they put that building in the spot that they put in. But, with that said, the, what I didn't tell you is the second option when building probably takes about 24 to 36 months. So, it's less than the renovation, believe it or not. The third option, of course, is the quickest, because you're building, you don't have to move anybody, you're just building the project. It's a 24-month one. And when I say, when I'm talking about months, I'm talking about when they put the first shovel in the ground. I'm not talking about preparing to get to that shovel in the ground. So, on the third option, you have a school, your auditorium, your gymnasium, your gymnasium is more in the middle of the school, whereas currently, right now, the gymnasium is towards the end. I do love a gymnasium in the middle, I've been used to that for the last couple of years, and what I love about that is that everybody can see in, and that does give, it changes the culture. But, my suggestion would be if the gymnasium stays where it is, that we open that up with glass, so that people can see in from all different angles, because if you know you're all, you never know who's watching you, you tend to act better. And there's, you see the multiple classrooms going on here, and there is a space over here, I think, on the first level, there's the preschool wing is on the, is on the back end here. And the reason the preschool is over here is so that folks could drive around and drop off on that. So, that's, our, our main concern from a, when we looked at it, yes, option three is the easiest option to do, because you can just build, everything's brand-new, it moves, it's quick, it's smooth. But, it's just not right, you know what I mean? You just look at it, you say, oh. Now, the good thing about, one of the things I wanted to talk to you about, option two, too, that you, that you understand, is that option two actually keeps the new boiler system in that you put in.
Yeah.
So, that shows that we're working, you know, we're not throwing things away, we're trying to really work on other things that we're doing. But, so that's, those, those were the options, and that's how, how things work. I can go back and you can ask questions, or I can show some slides.
On, on, before you leave, can you, on option three, can you superimpose the current building? Do you have that?
Yes. Yeah, it's there.
Yeah?
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay, I get it situated. Okay. So, you could build it without throwing down the high school, right?
Right. Yes.
But, what you are doing is cutting down the parking, because that new building will encroach on most of the side parking.
Yes, but when you do this, you'll notice that we've taken.
I meant while the, while.
Yeah.
While the building.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes. You're going to have some parking issues, there's no question about that.
So, that would impede, like?
It's a good point.
Football games?
Yeah.
Graduation?
Yeah, it's a very good point. I didn't think about that part, because you've got the tennis courts right there that, where, you know, so it's going to impede a lot of your parking.
Right.
Because all you're going to have is what you have right here, there, and over here, which probably is enough for school.
It's barely enough for staff.
Right, okay.
And they're not going to be able to utilize the side parking where the current cafeteria was.
Right.
So, they, they lose that whole parking area.
Right. Well, those are good things to take into, and then, of course, I just.
The beauty is gone.
When you go to the, when you look back at this other one, you still, so let's take a look at while that's being built. You are losing some parking there up in the front, but you have all of the, all your parking there.
On the side.
Right there.
Yeah.
So, so, those are the, so currently, now, I just want to make it clear to the public, these aren't the three, you know, these, we're not saying that these are the only options. This, we're a long way from all of that, but what we're doing is, we're doing what was the task. The task that was given to us was to look at a feasibility study. What would these options be if we wanted to do something with the high school? So, there is a renovation option there, a complete reno. There is a, and we, my thing goes into more detail, and I'll go into that later at other times. There's the renovation of just the gymnasium with new, and then there's building new. So, I think thus far, our, what the next steps are that you will see is the sticker shock on all of that. We're waiting to get those, what those prices look like with those types of options. And then, we will, you know, we're going to update town meeting on Monday night, and then we will see where we go on December 13th. Let's keep our fingers crossed, you know, that we may have a shot of getting into the pipeline, because if we do get into the pipeline on December 13th, and we're allowed to be enrolled into that program, that changes the whole dynamics right off the bat, because the committee has to be formed, and then you have to do the feasibility study all over again under their terms. And, but, the good news is we'll have at least an advantage of what we're looking at.
Right. So. So, what we really get out of this slide so far is that, from a physical feasibility perspective, the new building, the renovation, those are both physically possible. That's it?
Yes.
This is just physical possibilities?
There are physical, right.
Okay.
You do get that, that is correct. But, one of the things we have talked about, too, though, that you need to explore as we start to go to build these areas, or we look as we move into that area, is, is there ways that we could create better ways to get in?
Yeah.
Through track, you know, are there other access availabilities that can come in for roads and all there? I don't know those answers, but those are all things that have to be studied.
We've looked at that two or three times.
Yeah.
And there, unless things have changed, it's pretty difficult.
Yeah.
The back section is.
It's all ledge, right?
Well. It's ledge and swamp.
Yeah. We could build a bridge. But, the bigger issue is that, that in order to get in through the back, that's a cul-de-sac, and you'd have to go, I, I'm not sure that you could get through, may, I mean, you might be able to service the Colonial Park neighborhood.
You can walk through.
You can walk through, but, but I'm not sure that you're going to be able to get, say, half of the town through that area.
Right.
One side, then half the town on the other side. So, you might be able to service 10% of the town, but.
You can walk through this part of the area.
That's correct.
And over there to go to Colonial Park area.
That's right.
And this Colonial Park area.
Yeah, but, to be able to get a significant portion of town back through there, I think it'd be, I think it'd be difficult.
Yeah.
And, and it would be, it'd be, it would be a tremendous burden on the neighborhood. So, yeah, that'll probably not be.
Even as fire lanes, you might want to.
You might want it accessible, sure.
Look at it for a fire lane.
Or, or a second, a second exit. It certainly wouldn't hurt to have a, have a back exit in there, but I think it'd be hard to.
Yeah, and an emergency access.
Yeah, that's a different issue.
For a second exit would be.
Yeah.
Something that we would want to definitely.
Yeah, yeah, I would say so.
There was, there was at one time, a paper road where Benjamin Terrace is, which is the apartments in front of.
Brook Meadow.
Brook Meadow.
Is that, that where the.
Watson-Duncan Donuts.
That's Benjamin Terrace.
There's, there is a, there was a paper road, and it was Benjamin Terrace.
It probably still exists.
And that paper road went all the way down below the cliffs.
Okay.
And it might be big enough for emergency vehicles if we needed to do something like that.
Well, those are these things that we would explore and move through and take a look at all of those as we keep moving along on it, because people are going to ask, you know, how do we get in? How do we get out? All of those areas. And if we're going to renovate that, that area, we want to make sure that we have accessibility, especially for safety and security purpose, to be able to get in and out. We don't want to be trapped down in that section, so we want to look.
Nothing was a tighter squeeze than the middle school. That was a tight squeeze.
Yeah.
And we, we did it.
We did it, so.
So, the other, each of these scenarios, from a physical feasibility perspective, puts the, there's, school is still happening at a construction site, right?
Yes.
We still have that. I see that that's physically possible from this, but in terms of a desirability scenario, like, that's like the number one concern I have.
I understand that.
Yeah.
That's option number four.
What's that?
Totally different site.
Totally different, totally different site for the modular, for the temporary classrooms?
So, what you would do, what you would do on a, on a feasibility study with MSBA.
Yeah.
Is they're going to ask those specific questions. They're going to say, well, what other sites have you explored to look at where you build? So, we've, what we've done is we've just looked at this site.
Okay.
And perhaps there is other sites in Stonem. I don't know those answers yet, that you could build a new high school that says, oh, this is where we want to go and how that is. But, the, the issue that you're going to come across is, is that, yes, for two years or two and a half years, it might be discomfort.
Yeah.
But, you get used to it. But, do you, where else do you find all of this?
Which is not covered by a new, by, by.
By MSB.
By MSBA, that's right. They're covered.
And so.
That's millions and millions of dollars.
One of the things about, as I said, Stonem High School has this beautiful campus.
It's beautiful.
And that they've got all this great land, and having all of these teams have, for the most part, have their own fields.
Yeah.
You don't find that anywhere. I mean, that's, that's a rare occasion.
You have eight tennis courts.
So, that's, but, but, we will have to look and look at all of those possibilities of the feasibilities to say, okay, well, maybe we could build over here, and maybe we could look at these lands and stuff.
For both the permanent site and the temporary?
For the permanent site.
For the permanent site.
Permanent site. Temporary, temporary site, your goal is, is to keep them in the building that you have them in, that they're accustomed to being, and you work through those, that madness.
As a student who went through being in the middle school while another one was being built right beside, it really isn't that bad to build in the same building. What I feel is if you go into a module classroom, it's, you're out of your element, everything's kind of new, it's distracting, you have to walk around construction, I mean, if you have to go to the gym, you have to exit out of a module classroom. I think it'd be easier just to have the high school, like, if you can still go to the high school while renovation is going on, it's a little bit of comfort knowing, okay, well, this building may be bad, and maybe a little distracting outside, but something new is happening, and I'm in the same environment that I'm already used to.
And that was the case at the middle school. The students stayed in the existing building during, throughout the whole construction prep? Okay. Oh, my other question was in the scenario two, in, the first scenario, you said the classrooms stay below MSBA standards?
Scenario two, they build into the MSBA.
So, they would be, okay.
Yes. And the gym, so, one of the other things that's important to talk about for a second. Gymnasium right now, our current gymnasium is 16,000 square feet. MSBA is not going to build us a gymnasium of 16,000 square feet. They'll allow you to build to 16,000 square feet, but a majority of that will be on your dime. They'll, they'll only, you know, do, I think it's 12,000 square feet. However, what you ask them, if you renovate the gym, is to say, well, give me the amount of money that you would have given me to build a new gym at that square footage to renovate the current gym, and you usually come out pretty good on that. And, the auditorium, the auditorium right now, we currently, I believe you can, if you open up those little sit-back door sections, you can sit almost 1,000 people in that auditorium.
Really?
I believe so.
I think it was 800.
Okay. So, so it's 800.
Yeah.
They will allow you to build now up to 1,000 or to what you, what you had, but they won't reimburse you. They'll only reimburse you what they feel is two-thirds the amount of students of your total amount. And that's, you know, so those, those are the other expenses. The difference before though is that they would only build you that and wouldn't let you build bigger if you wanted to, now they will, they will let you do that, which is, in our case, that works for us, because that was one of the biggest concerns that I heard a lot from people was, I don't wanna lose the cafeteria size, I don't wanna lose the gymnasium size and I don't wanna lose the auditorium size of seating. We don't have to, what we have to do though is understand that that's something that would be on the Stonem dime, some of that expense.
Is the third, is the new construction scenario much smaller overall square footage than the?
No, she put it in as she, in, the way she designed it was that the gymnasium was still 16,000 square feet and the auditorium was 1,000 seating. So she set it up, the, well, she set it up the exact same dimensions that we currently have in there.
No.
So.
Your auditorium, you said two-thirds of the students you have, is it two-thirds of the high school students?
Two-thirds of the high school.
Okay, so that's 680.
Yeah, so you figure 700, you gotta look at two-thirds.
400.
Right, they build you an auditorium for 400.
It's small.
And, right.
Because compared to, yes, half the size of what we have today. That's a.
So where I was, so where you, where I was fortunate, where I built, when I built a middle high school, there was the key, I was building two schools in the same location, so all of a sudden they were like, all right, well, we'll give you the, we'll, we'll build the auditorium for 570.
Yeah.
Seats. Well, each school only had 500 students in it, so now you can fill a whole school in.
Yeah, one.
At one time in there, although the high school now is at 600, because if you build it, they will come. They've proven it, there are 1,100 students now in Winter and they, and they were told they were gonna build for 970, so.
A new, a new high school will, will cause this community to grow, absolutely will cause this community to grow, which is a good thing. But the, looking at that, and when you look at that, that auditorium, I think it certainly does make sense, regardless of where we end up, when we build a new school to build a, a high-end auditorium, we don't have an auditorium at the middle school now.
Right.
There's no reason why we can't share the high school auditorium for the elementary, middle school.
Yeah, not only that, but we need one town-wide. When we have a town meeting, a big town meeting, you can't put that many people at the current town hall. When we had the vote for the elementary schools in the town common, we had them at the high school, because it could seat.
And MSBA understands that, but they won't.
That's not their issue.
Their issue.
Yes.
So they'll, but I think most communities have put that argument forward now that they've said, well, then fine, but you're gonna pay for that extra space.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
And most communities would say, fine, I'll do that.
Right, right. So, so those are the, those, that's, that's where we're at. So thanks for letting me get that out there for you guys as well, so that now we've got it rolling.
Yeah.
We're talking.
Rolling, rolling, rolling. Okay. Moving right along.